Thank you, Patrick. Hello and welcome, everybody, to the November 5th regular meeting of the Walpols Select Board. As we always do at the start of our meetings, let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first appointment this evening is with Robin Chappell, seeking a vote to sign an amendment for the ground lease for the Superfund Site. So, Robin.
Hi. So, when we took down the old mill building, Michael Boynton worked out a deal with the responsible parties that when we owned the property, that they would carve out a little area that they could have a groundwater treatment facility there, and that they actually gave us a dollar for it to lease it, and that we would have certain obligations and they would have certain obligations with insurance. When we were going through that many years later, Jim said, "This is high insurance." It was $5 million, and none of our other buildings had that insurance. The ground there, they're still responsible for the contamination that they had done, so it wouldn't be anything that the town would be responsible for. But we asked them if we could lower that, and originally, they said no. And then we said, "Well, what if we lowered that to what our other buildings are insured for when we spoke to the insurance company, and that we would be responsible for that afterwards?" We spoke to the insurance company, we spoke, we had Mark Rich from government and Page give an amendment to write that up, and so we're asking you now to sign that so that we could fulfill the agreement and make it more cost-effective for the community.
Thanks, Robin. Any questions from the board for Robin?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to sign Amendment A for the ground lease for the Superfund Site.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Robin, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Are we going to see you again before your final...
I will have a reason to have a meeting.
Okay, perfect, all right. I wanted to make sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks for seeing me, thanks. All right, 7:05, time for our meeting with our legislative delegation, which I see we have at the back, so I want to welcome Senator Feeney, Representative Rogers, McMurtry, Dooley, and Kafka. If you guys could come on up to the microphone, that'd be awesome.
I thought you were going to say witness stand.
Yeah, well, you know, it might be that, too, so. So, it's wonderful to have you all here tonight, so thank you for fitting us in in your busy schedules, we really appreciate that. Is Nancy Galavan here? I think Nancy, you wanted to say a few words about the new funding mechanism, and then we're going to talk with you guys about that, but if I could just have Nancy say a couple words here quickly.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
And I also happen to have two Walpole High School students here with me tonight. For almost, well, more than 15 years, I've been advocating for adequate funding from the state, and we recognize the fact that it's a long haul, but one of the things that I'm most proud of is we've involved high school students at many points along the way. As a matter of fact, when I first started, one of the first students I worked with was Jim O'Neill's oldest daughter, who happens to be 32-years-old now.
She does, yes.
But it's an opportunity for students to learn how the legislative process works, what some of the hurdles are. So, tonight, I have Brendan Mahoney and Pranav Sudhir with me, and I just wanted to give them a chance to speak first, and then I have a few words.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right. Hello, I'm Brendan Mahoney, and I'm a junior at Walpole High School, and I personally see firsthand how this Student Opportunity Act funds can help benefit Walpole Public Schools. I've been fortunate enough to have lived in a middle-class school system, but there are other schools that should be getting more funding from the state because of their lack of resources that they are able to provide for their students. The first part of the bill, adding equitable funding for all schools across the state, is a must-have, and the impact on Walpole with this bill, part of the bill, may be smaller but not unnoticed. One piece of the first part of the bill revolves around funding for special education. At Walpole High School, the special education program is strong and united with the rest of the school. This is partially due to Best Buddies, a program that pairs students with intellectual and developmental disabilities with buddies to promote an inclusive environment. I've been a member of this organization since my freshman year, and now I'm currently Vice President of the school's chapter, and I can personally say that the special education programs are vitally important to these students and truly affect their lives in many different ways. The second section of the bill details how personalized education experiences can be given to every single student, and this states how the mental, emotional, and physical health of students needs to be taken more seriously, and this bill is able to accomplish that. There are many students, not only Walpole but across the state, who are in need of support, but the school does not have funding to give to them, and with this new bill, this is possible. Another positive way this affects Walpole is closing the gap on the opportunity that exists within the schools. This will provide students with lesser opportunities with more chances to succeed by giving them more 21st-century technology and better chances of postgraduate success. Finally, the bill will provide more insight on local funding, which will benefit the schools who need it the most and provide equity among the schools. Overall, the Student Opportunity Act will benefit not only Walpole but all schools across the state, giving schools the opportunity to thrive with the current situation they have by giving them the extra boost they need. Thank you for your attention to this important matter.
Great, thank you very much for talking to us tonight.
That's what counts, that's what counts. So, I felt strongly, after having worked for so long on this, that it was an opportunity to thank our legislators, because you may have been reading about this in the newspaper, and votes like this come up once or twice, maybe a handful of times, in a legislator's experience, and all too often, people come with their complaints and not necessarily with their gratitude. So, after having haunted some of these people for years, I felt strongly that it was important to thank them as well. In 1993, the Massachusetts Legislature had an amazing act called the Education Reform Act, and it was an act of courage at that point. I call this a similar act of courage, because the fear, from the legislator's point of view, was the price tag of funding public education is huge, and this Student Opportunity Act comes with a price tag of $1.5 billion. And that is no small request. It's a current piece of legislation that's working its way through the Massachusetts Legislature. It's been approved unanimously by the House and the Senate, which is very unusual. It benefits everybody in Massachusetts to different levels, but as Brendan explained so well, it helps with our Chapter 70 funding, which I'm sure you, as a board, are aware, that's our largest pot of state revenue that comes into Walpole, is the Chapter 70 funding. Probably the next biggest pot of money comparable to Chapter 90 money is what we get for circuit breaker, the special education circuit breaker, and this bill will allow us to include the cost of transportation for the most severely disabled students and get reimbursement on that. So, again, it's helping a big-ticket item for our town. Another financial benefit is it should get us full reimbursement for the students that choose to go to charter schools. That's been something that just hasn't, it's a wishy-washy kind of a thing, and they're trying to tighten this. So, I guess what I know is that they've listened carefully, and it took an awful lot of listening and compromising. This is something that's supported by bipartisan support, but it's also supported by the business community as well as the unions. You don't get that kind of work done without an awful lot of effort put into it, so I felt it was important to thank our legislators. I feel like the Student Opportunity Act is a career-defining vote in our time for our legislators. I've covered most of this. From our point of view as school committee members, I thought it was just really important to bring the students here. It's probably the most gratifying part of the job, and I really just wanted to thank Brendan, Pranav, and there were a group of about nine total students from Walpole High that came and really wanted to learn about it. They had excellent questions, and I think it's important for the community to know that our advocacy has been strong and will continue to be strong when you see things like that. The legislation does not do everything we asked for, and I think it's important in this time in our world for people to understand that you have to make compromises. It's not, what we have been talking about is the fact that the foundation budget has not been equal to what it really costs to provide an adequate education in Massachusetts, but this closes the gap significantly, provides a great deal of help for the cities that need the most, but as I said, it also does provide help for Walpole. Two more points. I think it's super-important that you guys did this legislatively. I think people are very cynical about the legislative process right now, and a lot of people told me they'll only do it if there's a lawsuit that forces them to do it, and I think the fact that you did work through the legislative process, for me, that was reassuring. And I hope you're proud of the people of Walpole who have relentlessly dogged you and your predecessors to contribute to this work, because active citizen engagement is difficult and tries one's patience, but it's meaningful when moments like this occur. So, on behalf of all the Walpole people who prodded, advised, pleaded, advocated, and yes, maybe even haunted you, please accept our gratitude for bringing us some additional education funding. We respect and appreciate you and your advocacy for us. Thank you very much.
And Nancy, I have to say thank you for all the work you have done. You know, you talk about dogging people, you've been doing that for a long time, and it's much appreciated, and this is as much a win as a result of your efforts as anyone else's, so thank you.
I was the haunted person.
Yes, I know you were.
They know that, they know that. Thank you.
And to the students, thank you for being here today as well, so thanks. So, to the reps and our senator, I thank you for your diligent efforts here, and if you want to come up to the microphone and talk to us a little bit about the legislation and from your perspective, and then we've got a couple other things we'd like to touch on, but I want to give each of you some opportunity to talk. So, John, if you'd like to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, Selectman Salvatore, Selectman Barrett, Selectman Galavan. We have a feeling that's the last time we'll be calling you Selectman. Because the legislation, I know we're already far out of the State House, we've been working on it preemptively, and I know that the town wants to change its charter, and we're here to be your legislative partners once again.
Well, we've already started calling ourselves Select Board and Chair and things like that, so we're glad that you're also moving it forward quickly, so thank you.
I think it'll catch on, it's on the front page of the Walpole Times as well, so it's catching on really fast.
Great, thank you.
So, as the dean of the delegation, for the record, my name is John Rogers. Joining with us is Senator Paul Feeney, Representative Lou Kafka, Representative Paul McMurtry, Representative Sean Dooley. And once again, you know, it's an honor to collaborate with the elected officials, with the citizens of Walpole. You know, Nancy called the legislation an act of courage, and that's very kind, but I think the delegation would like to call it an act of collaboration. It's the zeal, it's the efforts here locally, and we just listen. You make our jobs easier, so we want to say thank you to you. And Nancy, in particular, and the entire, Bill Buckley, the chairman of the Walpole School Committee, and Sue Lawson, the entire FENCOM, everyone on the Walpole Town Meeting who each year, each day, communicate with our offices on not only just investments for the people of Walpole, but most importantly, the two gentlemen that just preceded us at this microphone, Brendan and Pranav, and all the Walpole schoolchildren. And that's what it's really about, and they're only juniors, and they can't even vote yet. And for the delegation, and I'm sure for the board, it's never been about one's ability to vote, to have an impact on legislation, and have an impact, and effect, and an outcome on a better quality of life. And we know that investment in education in Walpole and all the other school districts across the Commonwealth makes for a better life. It's an investment in our future, it's an investment, more importantly, in their future. So, with regard to the SOA that Nancy had mentioned, yeah, it's a great piece of legislation, it comes after years of working in the House and in the Senate, but mostly with schools like Walpole School Committee and school districts, like Walpole. The first two significant changes in the law changed the way the Chapter 70 formula is written, and this delegation has suspected for years that it had erroneous assumptions built into the Chapter 70 formula. This delegation led the way to say, "We want to pass a new law to establish a Foundation Budget Review Commission that would look at this formula and to see if there's any false assumptions." And the commission came back and said, "Yeah, we're undercounting the way we calculate insurance regarding employees and retirees in school districts, and we're undercounting the amount of sped students per district, and therefore, we're reimbursing school districts at a lower rate, a lower funding level." So, that's been addressed, and that's been fixed in both the Senate and the House formula. It also fully funds, as Nancy said, charter school reimbursements, which I know for the town of Walpole, that's anywhere between, in any given year, 18 to 25 children in Walpole that choose not to go. A lot of those students do come back to the Walpole School System, but during that transition, it costs the town real money. So, the new act will fully fund charter school reimbursements. In addition, it will make an additional $150 million for school building assistance. Each year, we, under the School Modernization and Reconstruction Trust, we set aside, the first thing after we do, when we establish consensus revenue number for the next fiscal year, is to set aside one penny from all the sales tax receipts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and put it into the trust for school reconstruction under the new model school building program. So, this year alone, that's $939 million in the trust. This bill will, you'll witness, an additional $150 million on top of that as well. So, I know that that's important, as the Byrd Middle School now is in the feasibility stage, so that's important to you, to the school committee, and to the delegation. What it means for Walpole, once fully implemented, and the timeframe on implementation is one of the conference committee sticking points between the House and the Senate, and I'm sure it'll be ironed out, but what it means is an additional $750,000 for Chapter 70, for K-12 public education in Walpole. What it means is an additional $150,000 for charter school reimbursement. So, that's significant, because it's about 100% increase in the level of money you're receiving now as a school district. And I know there's a split between school side of budgeting and general government spending side of budgeting, so we're well aware of that. So, we just try to increase the number of dollars, whether it comes to general government in Walpole, our school in Walpole, because we know that you'll know where to spend the money wisely and prudently, as always. And it also means another $444,000 in the sped circuit breaker, once fully implemented. And part of the reason for that is we commit to fully funding. This year, we're going to, we've appropriated in this year's FY '20 state budget, some $345 million for sped circuit breaker. And the circuit breaker, for those who may not know what it is at home, is that the state will now reimburse cities and towns 75 cents on the dollar for sped spending in your own budget, anytime that reaches the first dollar after four times the foundation budget level. In order to get to that circuit breaker, we've now implemented in this legislation transportation costs. For years, the delegation has been filing standalone bills that the state must incorporate local school spending on transportation costs, which is often exorbitant. And that now will be included in the formula to get to the circuit breaker, so that cities and towns and school districts get to that circuit breaker and get more circuit breaker special education funding. So, that's a huge commitment that we've been working with the school committee and yourself for years on, way ahead of the other cities and towns in the Commonwealth, and again, it's Walpole, once again, seemingly, leading for the rest of the Commonwealth, and that's why, you know, we're so proud, you know, to work on these endeavors successfully on your behalf.
Well, thank you for taking us through that, and again, thank you for the advocacy and support on the Hill. We really appreciate it. We're really blessed to have five members of this delegation, and the representation that Walpole gets as a result is extraordinary, and want to really thank you for that. So, we have a few other items to talk through. I do want to make sure that I give everybody an opportunity to stand at the podium, but maybe I could start by, first of all, giving you all a big thank you for a couple of other items, not quite on the same order of magnitude as what we just talked about, but nonetheless important. One was Morgan Field improvements, $50,000, really appreciate that. And Boydun School improvements, we also received $50,000 for playground and field improvements through your efforts, so that's really wonderful. Thank you. Senator Feeney.
If I could, Mr. Chair, thank you, and to the members of the Select Board, I just want to, I want to get to those earmarks in one second, but I also want to echo what the dean of our delegation said, Representative Rogers. Nancy Galavan, if I could just share a personal story, I have nine cities and towns in our Senate District. We had a roundtable last year, we brought together superintendents of school committee members, and select boards, and parents and teachers. Walpole was well-represented. The day of the vote that we were taking the Student Opportunity Act up in the Senate, you know, typically, you reach out to the people in your district and say, "Okay, here's what we know, how does this affect each community?" And literally, you know, the way the legislature works sometimes, I was literally running into the Senate chamber with figures on the back of a napkin, trying to figure out what this means to the community of Walpole, and I was on the phone with Nancy as I was running in to take the vote and to figure out whether or not this would benefit the community of Walpole. And I will tell you that at a moment's notice, we had people here in Walpole that were ready to look at it and say, "Okay, this helps us, this doesn't, this is what we need you to advocate for, this is what we need you to fight for." That's pretty unique, right, to have somebody in your community that knows this backwards and forwards, and was able to inform me going into my vote, and certainly, the legislative delegation going in to vote on this ultimately. So, I just want to mention that, because it was great for me personally to be able to have that opportunity to connect with somebody in Walpole to figure out if this bill would benefit the community. It overwhelmingly does, as we just heard from Representative Rogers. So, Walpole, the entire community should be commended. Students reached out to us, parents reached out to us, teachers reached out to us, you know, select board members, everybody from the community reached out to make sure that we were empowered to do our job, so thank you for that. On those earmark items, the delegation works well together, as you know, sometimes, as you get into budget debates, there's not so much money to spread around, so you've got to prioritize. And again, we reach out to the people in the community. Jim's been great in identifying priorities and telling us, "Look, this is what I need you guys to fight for." That's where the $50,000 came from at Morgan Field and over at Boydun. Hopefully, you know, revenue projections look like they're going in the right direction so that we're able to partner with the community again to identify priorities and make sure that we're spending, you know, taxpayer resources in the right place.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Senator, I appreciate that. Why don't I open it up to the board for questions that you might want to put to the delegation, and then we'll let whoever would like to speak to it, speak to it. So, questions from the board?
I'm happy to jump in. So, first, I'd just like to say, again, we appreciate all of the work you do on prison mitigation. That's important money for the town, and it really helps us accomplish some of the projects and things that we need to do, and we know it's not an every-year thing. You know, as we look back, there have been some years when it was vetoed, and we appreciate, and we know that you have to go back to that every year and bang away on enough people, get enough people behind you to make that happen. I did want to also mention the Economic Development Bond Bill. There was $1 million in there for Old Town Hall. There was a million dollars in there for Old Town Hall in 2017. The funds weren't yet borrowed. Just wondering if you have any idea of, is that a likely thing to happen? Do we need to reach out to the governor? I'm not really sure. I'm sort of throwing it out to you to see what you think.
We're with you a hundred percent. And I think it's, again, a collaborative effort between the Selectmen and the delegation to call, email, write the governor and urge him to fully appropriate the full, or release the full million dollars that's been authorized. Now, bonds are not like budgets, so as you know, the governor is not required, in a fiscal sense, to spend the money on the town hall, the old town hall. He can go anywhere between one dollar up to the million dollars that the legislature authorized. So I think, you know, governors want to hear from their constituents and they need to hear from the constituents. That's the importance of this funding. So, you know, we look forward to working with you. And that's not to, you know, put the governor in a corner here. And I think he knows all of you and I think he campaigned in this town, he's been here several times, so he knows the people of Walpole, he knows the importance of this item. And he knows that, you know, citizens of Walpole, as well as their representatives, are frugal. So they're not going to really ask for anything that is really not required and that we can't back up. So again, as Chairman Selectman Galavan, it's a collaborative effort. And I think, you know, letters help and phone calls help. And if we want to set up a meeting with the delegation, with some of the governor's representatives, we can do that and we should do that as well.
Okay. And I also recognize, but I didn't say it, that you helped get it in the bond bill in the first place. And so this has been something going on for several years and we appreciate that. Like, like a lot of things, we have to keep pushing until it happens. And it seems to be maybe three-quarters of the way there. And, you know, that's one of those things that we'd really like to see happen. That's a historic building and, you know, we'd really like to help keep it in good condition. We had a town hall reuse committee formed to take a look at that building and we're sort of working through the process to figure out what it will be in its next life. So we appreciate it.
And with regard to mitigation, there's an item that was appropriated in the state budget, the operating budget, that the governor's required to spend. It's in Section Two, line item eighty-nine hundred dash oh-one-hundred. The money's there, it's been authorized. But sometimes governors, as you've alluded to, will nine C those earmarks, as they're called. And nine Cs are referenced to the state finance statute, Chapter Twenty-Nine, Section Nine C, that says, when revenues are not going to match or exceed spending that's been authorized, the governor, we give the governor statutory or the power to go in and reduce spending in Section Two. This item, which is worth about eight hundred thousand dollars for the town of Walpole, and by the way, if appropriate, and we expect it to be appropriated by the governor, Walpole will exceed ten million dollars since this program's inception. It's the only town in Massachusetts that receives this type of money. And a lot of times we get asked in the chamber, I know Senator Feeney in the Senate chamber, and, you know, they ask us, how'd you do that? How'd you get it in? And it's just, it's just honest to God, it's not only collaborative efforts here, but collaborative efforts intra-camerally and inter-camerally between the House and the Senate. And we just keep fighting for it. It just, just keeps coming back. So we'll be sending a letter probably at the end of this month, if we haven't seen action on that. Usually Governor Patrick and Governor Baker waited till at least the second quarter of the new fiscal year. So we're just into the second quarter now, so I don't think there's any really alarm to press for it now. We will be asking for it if we don't get it soon. We'll certainly be continuing to ask for the release of the money, as Senator Feeney says. And as the House delegation knows, revenues continue to exceed benchmark for the current fiscal year. So there's no reason to hold on to the money here.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to just comment on that because, again, another great story. The way that that million dollars, as you know, came about, Mr. Selectman, is we had a delegation meeting with the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development here in Walpole. Very unique opportunity where Secretary Asher, who was a former secretary, actually came to Walpole. We had a meeting with members of the board, planning board, the town administrator and others. And we talked about kind of what the priorities were and where we needed to invest and have some resources from the state. And after we had some chocolate shakes and ice cream up at Bubblin' Brook, Rep. McMurtry bought everybody ice cream up the road for the delegation, the secretary actually came to us and said, you know, you should really think about putting this into a bond bill. So, you know, we got buy-in from the administration then. I think it's important that we keep on kind of banging that drum and shaking the trees to say, look, this is, this is an idea that came about from this collaborative meeting with the secretary. It's time to release these funds. So I know the delegation has sent previous letters, we'll continue to work with you to do that.
Thank you. Thanks. Other questions from the board? Ben?
As it regards the impacts of the Comprehensive Permit Act on Walpole, really, there's two parts to my question, or commonly called the Forty Bs, which we're all familiar with from talking about at these board meetings. There's really two parts, I guess. First of all, the Housing Partnership here in Walpole has been working very hard over the past year and a half or so, putting together a housing production plan, you know, putting together bylaw revisions that are going to be coming at Springtown Meeting to do the right thing morally and ethically and to get affordable housing in the forefront here of Walpole. And yet, it seems that we are continually inundated with these Forty B projects. And on top of that, it's really the language within the Comprehensive Permit Act that talks about, you know, having these buildings and these developments be beneficial to the town and be within the characteristics of the neighborhoods and things of that nature. And we could all see from the seed of development that has currently been submitted for a permit, that that's not the case at all. In fact, it couldn't be further from the truth with some of these, some of these applications. So we really are looking to see what we can do to streamline that process, make it so that, you know, it's fair for the town, because we're doing what we can, we're trying to make progress. The town has shown, the residents have shown, they have an appetite for this, that they're very interested in this. And, you know, we just keep coming up against a wall with it. So, and as we talk about these budget issues and getting money from the state for circuit breaker and other items, I mean, there's a huge financial aspect to it as well, right? It's on our schools, three hundred some odd units coming into a single elementary school and on our utilities as well. So it's a big concern for us on a number of fronts. And it's currently not working. The system's not working to the benefit of the town.
Thank you, Selectman Barrett, for those remarks. And I guess I'll just speak for myself here. I was, I've been frustrated by the statute, Chapter Forty B, for years. I filed a bill for this session to repeal it, to get rid of it, to replace it with triple funding of the Affordable Housing Trusts for a very, very aggressive low-income housing tax credit, because we get the need for affordable housing in Massachusetts and we're not incentive to that. But you look at Section Two of Chapter Forty B and it talks about, the purpose of the law is to empower communities. It goes the opposite way of empowering. It gives you no say whatsoever.
Right.
If you deny a permit, if they go right to the State Housing Appeals Committee and get a comprehensive permit and then override local zoning and do really whatever they want, and then leave town forever.
Right.
And leaving forever, the character of the town changed. So thanks for saying that, thanks for speaking up on that. We all have projects in our districts where Forty B developers have come in and they leave with a quick buck and don't care. So again, whatever we can do, working with you and Housing Partnership for good ideas, please, please speak as you continue to do. So thank you.
Thanks. Nancy?
Hi. I just wanted to bring up the Home for Little Wanderers. I know in the past you guys helped us. The Home for Little Wanderers has had a fabulous partnership for years and years and years with Walpole and it's offered a great opportunity, until a few years ago when they got bigger and they relocated out here and it got out of control. And then we reached out and, you know, it closed down for a while and they were restructuring. And now they're open again and the same cycle is happening again. And the calls for services there, the kids that are out of control, the resources that it's taking on the town. But the most important thing is, if all of that is happening, we're failing these kids. And the point of the Home for Wanderers is to give them the opportunity to be out here in Walpole and not wherever they were. But if we're not going to take care of them and if we're not going to give them the opportunity that they need, then it was for nothing. And we're not making their lives any better. And I know that as a town, we're getting frustrated, as the police station and the fire station being called up there, they're getting frustrated. We need your help because, you know, we said it in the beginning, and once they come here, they're our children, that we need to find a way that either we serve these children right or they can't handle it the way it is and it needs to be changed for good. But we need you guys to help us.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. You know, I remember when we first started working on this issue, Police Chief Carmichael was Sergeant Carmichael, I believe, at the time, and doing an excellent job as the point person for a public safety community and for this board, as local police commissioners in bringing attention to the issue, but also working with the delegation once again to say, yeah, this is a problem. The president of the home was less than cooperative at that time. I think that certain, president's gone, but that president did eventually come, I think we met down the hall here at the town hall, and shared stories and shared the costs associated with the constant responses for incidents that occurred out of there. And also, like you say, Madam Vice Chair, the big picture, these children, whose lives we as a Commonwealth, we as a community, hold in custody for a better future. And they weren't receiving that here in the friendly town of Walpole, because, not because of Walpole, because of the way it was run. It administered many times locally by the home and centrally by the vendor for the Commonwealth. So, you know, we appropriate each year some twelve million dollars to Department of Children and Families. And a lot, that money goes to the Home for Little Wanderers, you know, statewide. So that's where we can have a say as state legislators and as state appropriators. You know, we're giving you twelve point five million dollars. Can you have local responsibility and establish new rules after listening to Selectmen, after listening to the police, who are constantly responding to incidents in that home? Can you do something about it? So that's what we can do. I think another meeting with perhaps the DCF Commissioner and the new president. And I think the last time we did that, it was successful and things were relatively quiet in that neighborhood.
That'd be appreciated. Thanks.
Other questions or comments? David?
Following up with what Nancy said, it's just a recent incident, one of the students wandered off the property and the police, it was during the night shift, the police chief called a couple of extra guys in to go deal with this. They were out there looking for these kids. We want to protect them, we want to get them back safely. The police officers go back to check on the situation, go back to the little wanderers. The kids had been back there for an hour or so. They didn't even, weren't even give us the courtesy of, you know, telling us that the kids had returned. And it's a, you know, you know, it's a, it's a, as Nancy and you said, that it's about the kids as well. We're well, they're trying to protect them and find them and get them back before they end up in someone's car, heading, you know, somewhere that they met on social media or heading into Boston on the train. So it's certainly a big concern of us. I have another comment. And this is, I, it wasn't on the agenda, so you didn't have the heads up and I don't expect a big response, but maybe someone knows this. The personal property tax for, you know, manufacturing plants is set up such that if the manufacturing plant owns the building, all the equipment in the building gets exempted. But if the company leases the building from someone else, we can, we can tax that, those items, those manufacturing, that manufacturing equipment. Can anyone see what the logic is? Is there any logical reason for that historic, historically logic? You know, I don't understand why that is.
It's like myself, it's a great question. And the only logic I can submit is that if you're, if you're an owner, you're paying twice, you're paying the real estate tax and you're paying the property tax on top of that. But, you know, a lot of cities and towns, that's the way it is. So other than not charging the less C for...
I'm speaking about the equipment inside, not the, you know, the sometimes very expensive equipment for the person...
So if you own the building, the manufacturing facility, you pay real estate taxes locally, but you don't pay property taxes.
Personal property taxes.
Personal property taxes on the equipment inside.
Right.
And so the only logic I can see in that, I don't know if this is a legislative rationale, was that this business, if you own it, would have to pay twice, real estate taxes and then real property taxes. So, you know, again, happy to work with you. I believe it's Chapter Fifty-Nine of the Mass General Laws we're talking about, right? So happy to file a bill on Walpole.
You know, it's been just on there and you wonder if it's like, goes back to the, harkens back to the days when GE was on the North Shore and they owned their buildings and they got some special deal or some of these large manufacturers that had more pull when they were staying in town forever.
Could be.
But in this new economy where these manufacturers are here and then they're not, you know, why is, you know, I think it was AstraZeneca in Marlboro or Southboro that moved out, they were paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in personal property tax because they didn't happen to own the building. And then obviously Siemens here owns the building and they're not paying a dime on their personal property tax.
So happy to do research on that and share the research. And if it just seems like a ludicrous finding at the end of that, then maybe, you know, the way to address this is to amend Chapter Fifty-Nine of the General Laws.
It offends my sense of fairness, it really does. Thank you.
Thanks, David. John Hasenjager from Economic Development Committee is here and he has a question for you, so I'm going to acknowledge John.
Thank you, gentlemen. John Hasenjager, Precinct One Economic Development. Two issues that we'd like to bring to your attention. One is that Walpole was brought to awareness of green, the Green New Deal, so to speak, of trying to use renewable energy. We passed a referendum at town meeting that by 2030, the town would be one hundred percent reliable on renewable energy. However, the State Energy Department is virtually doing everything they can to reduce the size allowed for solar projects in the Commonwealth. They're doing away with commercial-grade solar and even large-scale solar over one acre. I would call that to your attention because those two lines are going to cross. And if you can't have an expansion of solar energy, there's no way the communities that signed up for renewable energy by 2030 are going to be able to make it. So that's one concern. The second one, as you know, water is our town seal. We have the water in the mill. Walpole is known for its water. We have plenty of water resources. However, we are regulated by the Department of Environmental Protection in Massachusetts. And we are due for a withdrawal permit renew and resetting very soon in the future. And we're concerned because there's been a pattern of the state reducing the withdrawal volumes for neighboring communities. And I believe a case could be made that the state does not take into account the extent of economic development or the stage of economic development that communities are in. Walpole, as you may know, we had a meeting on open space, the Conservation Commission had a meeting just the other night. Walpole has fifty-five percent open space yet in the community. We have a lot of development. We have the Route One Corridor project coming on board. We have some new hotels in town. We have others under construction. The state very much encourages us to expand a Siemens project in this community that uses a lot of water. So in brevity... So, in brevity, we are in a growth stage for water consumption and we have plenty of water, but there is a pattern of people not recognizing these characteristics and going with historical data to reduce the amount of water withdrawal. We have the water in the ground, but if they don't let us withdraw it, it doesn't do us any good. And we're concerned. We do have 800 some new units of housing coming online. We have new business plans. We want to be able to build our business tax base and participate in the Route One Corridor project. So, we very much need your help. I reached out last June. We were trying to have our staff contact you to have a meeting with the Sewer and Water Commissioners. I happen to be a Sewer and Water Commissioner as well, to help us proactively address this so Walpole will be able to get a fair and representative water withdrawal permit for the future of this town so we can continue with not just affordable housing and new public facilities, but with new business, which is the mission of the Economic Development Commission and our business tax base. So, I'd very much ask you if you could, William Abbott's the chairman of our commission, and somehow, I've been told several emails have been sent out, but no one has responded. And we're trying to, and I know you guys are really busy up there, but if you're going to help Walpole, water's the building block. Forget everything else. If we don't have adequate water, everything else goes out the window. So, I'd very much encourage you, gentlemen, if you would be so kind, is to reach out to our chairman so we can establish that meeting as soon as possible and so we can be prepared and get the proper withdrawal permit for the plans of our community. We don't have to have some errant decision made and then we have to go fight and dig ourselves out of a foxhole. If that makes any sense.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Message received. Critical. I mean, water is critical to everything we do. When we talk about 40B and investing in housing and economic development, water is literally the critical infrastructure that we need to make sure that, you know, we have in sustainable. Walpole should be commended for what they've been doing, you know, in a progressive way to make sure that we're doing everything we can to rely more on renewable energies going forward. And I'll say that it's, we assume sometime in this session that there'll be some sort of an omnibus energy and environmental bill coming from both chambers, which would be probably the correct avenue for us to address kind of the big picture items, the daily blocking tackling of making sure that we, you know, we sit down and talk about withdrawal permits and the regulatory atmosphere. I think we can, we'll all commit now to making sure that we have those meetings soon. But from a bigger picture, I mean, obviously, you know, when it comes to the environment and what we're doing for renewable energies, we're playing a little bit of defense and a little bit of offense. Defensively, last year in both chambers, we did a climate adaptation and management plan to make sure that we were addressing the needs that exist right now based on climate change activity right here in Walpole, something that was never even on our radar screen. When you think about climate change and some of the, some of the results that we're seeing now, you think about seawalls, right? You think about coastal communities. We have privately owned dams throughout the Commonwealth that we have to make sure are prepared for that once in a 50-year storm, the once in a 100-year storm, that now we think are going to come a lot, a lot sooner. So, we invested some money there. That's kind of the defensive portion of it. And then offensively, to make sure that we're increasing the Commonwealth's renewable portfolio standards, that we're being aggressive, moving towards 100% renewable, you know, and setting goals so that we can do that quickly. So, Walpole's really a model for what the rest of the Commonwealth should be doing. I know we're not doing enough. Everybody should be doing more. But, you know, you can't do that unless we make sure that we have the critical infrastructure in place so that we can afford to do more economic development and housing. When I think of South Walpole and I think of that 40B development, I mean, it's just, it just doesn't fit, right? And water is a part of that. We're going to see more development across from Route One over Patriot Place, right? There is one water table, right? And when we draw, we're going to make sure that we're recharging exactly what we needed so that we have that sustainable for the future. We have had folks from Water and Sewer come to our office hours and reach out, but I think if we set up a meeting, you know, in the next few weeks, then we'd be happy to do that.
Just to follow up on that, I want to follow the sewer. I kind of skipped the sewer and water commissioners. I asked these guys to come in here first, then the sewer and water commissioners. I'll work with your offices and your folks to make sure that we set up something very soon to talk about that, because I am concerned about that, as Rick Mattson and Bernie Marshall are DPW Director and Water Sewer Superintendent, so I'll take the hit on that one.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Mark, I think you want to...
Yeah, one other thing I wanted to mention is just the whole Foxborough train. You know, as a town, since October 21st, have been running 22 trains a day. We're sort of struggling through that in different ways. In South Walpole, down near the post office, you know, near the Boydin School, you know, those gates come down, they're down for several minutes each time. And as you all know, that's exactly where the 40B is going to go with 300 units. So, think about when it's early morning, there's kids queued up on their bike, the school bus is queued up to go to Boydin, the gates are down for six or seven minutes, two or three times that hour, because that happens to be the busy hour. So, just, we need to keep aware of that. You need to sort of keep that in the back of your mind. The MBTA also adjusted some of the train schedules, which was a little bit of a surprise to us. And there's five less trains to Walpole. I think there's three fewer in the morning and two fewer in the evening, although I may have that backwards. So, it is causing people who used to know their train to now have to make another decision. And maybe they'll go to Foxborough, which is probably the goal of the MBTA, to push people out to Foxborough. But it is creating havoc for a lot of people, especially when those trains are running late, and they're running late a lot right now. So, it seems like they've got more trains running on the track than they can effectively manage. So, any help you could give us on just, you know, the trains are here, you know, we weren't happy about that, but they're here. We recognize that. So, now it's really about making it efficient and effective for the people who, you know, live in Walpole and Foxborough and the other towns. So, anything you can do to help them realize that it's really affecting a lot of people's lives, and sometimes those trains are running 45 minutes per hour late, and that's really affecting people, you know, in trying to get to work. And I know some people then go to Norwood and some people go to 128 Station, and it's just creating this ripple effect of havoc in the morning, so.
Yeah, and if... We see those parking lots, you know, almost daily, and they're at capacity now because it was folks south of the line are now going north of the line for parking. And with regard to the Foxborough train, we're all, we're all opposed to it. We work with two administrations saying we're opposed to it. It doesn't make any sense. It jeopardizes schoolchildren, families in that area, all along the former Freight Line spine. It's something that I think is extremely unfortunate, is something that we're all opposed to and we fought. In fact, we got a law through that says anytime that the MBTA now wants to expand it, it has to give the clerks of the House and the Senate, and through them, the delegation, the senators and the reps, notice of such expansion before they can even do it, so we can have an opportunity to fight it administratively or legislatively. But, you know, the usage of that, of the Foxborough train is, it's not working. Why they can't expand bus travel, the buses that stop here in Walpole to go, yeah, down to Walpole Mall. Our local economy comes first, before the Foxborough, before Patriot Place. Why that can't happen first as a pilot program before we expand trains from Walpole to Foxborough is nonsensical. So, it makes no sense whatsoever, but we continue to try to reach out, maybe we will once again, Secretary, Governor, Secretary of Transportation.
Okay, Nancy?
And also, every time a train is skipping a stop in Walpole Center, it's directly taking business away from Walpole Center, because that spillover of people parking and shopping, you know, they're missing Walpole Center, and instead, they're going to Foxborough, they're going to Norwood. So, not only is there the safety concerns, but they're taking our business.
Great point.
Yeah, if I can make one further point as well, is in looking towards the future, and we talk about getting, getting notice for these projects, and we just saw that, you know, I can't recall the name of the committee or the agency that just was earmarking billions of dollars for possible enhancements for trains, electrifying, electrifying trains instead of diesel and expanding the tracks, running more trains. And that's, that's all interesting, and that's all very far off in numbers of years. But if you look at how the lines run through Walpole and where the Foxborough line cuts off and how the train station was set up, it should be, as Nancy said, and we've all acknowledged, a vibrant part of the town. So, to have the opportunity, if they are going to be putting in two tracks between Norwood and Walpole, if they are going to be running more, more trains to Foxborough, to try to get that area set up, have them invest some money to make it a usable space for the town. Because obviously, where the station is now and how the tracks run, when they built it however many, 100 years ago, the trains were running much slower, there wasn't that many people around. Well, now it cuts right through the parking lot, right? So, that whole space is completely unusable. So, I know that they're generating a lot more revenue off of those trains and putting the minimum amount of revenue back in, in grade crossings and whatnot. But we'd like to see a little bit more of that revenue put back into the town and how we can incorporate that rail station back into the town like it was originally.
Thanks, Ben. David?
It was an interesting social media post about the train, and there's a picture of the MBTA map has Foxborough on the train. And interestingly enough, the train, the train goes on the map, goes right, goes to Foxborough, Gillette Stadium, but it also goes all the way to the Mansfield Line, which was a discussion at the time that we knew that this was going to happen. Sorry, Foxborough, the MBTA is coming your way, and your town has five grade crossings that is coming your way. And I also, in today's Providence Journal, it said Providence is now going to have, MBTA is discussed having service to Providence, Rhode Island, every 20 minutes. Well, guess what? That connects with the Mansfield Line. So, they're setting it up to, so that the train's coming up from Providence, it's going to blow right through Walpole, and, you know, we're going to, we're on the short end of this whole, whole deal once again. But at least Foxborough Selectmen, who made the deal with Gillette and made this whole plan and ushered it through, made their deal with Bob Kraft, they're going to get theirs too, because they're getting five grade crossings.
Great. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, I just wanted to say, I think all of us probably in this room, I mean, we love public transportation, right? If anybody's tried to drive into Boston, I think all of us are averaging about two and a half hours windshield time to try and get in and out of Boston. Anybody who commutes, it's a complete nightmare. You know, it's not good to have cars, obviously, sitting on the expressway. So, public transportation's great. The problem in this state is it's been so mismanaged for years, and I don't think it's just any one administration. This goes back a long time, speaking just personally from my frame of reference. We all want to make sure that we're investing in public transportation, but select person's Barrett point, Barrett's point, in the right way, to make sure that we're actually fixing the system that we have now. We're investing in places like in Walpole where the train station is so that we can build some transit-oriented development around there, so that people actually stop and patronize our shops and live there. And, you know, we know that there's a pressing need, especially for a lot of young folks that are working in the city of Boston that don't necessarily have cars, that rely on public transportation, that rely on the commuter rail. So, we want to make sure that they have a place where, you know, they can take the commuter rail and they can live nearby, and they can shop nearby and go to restaurants nearby. We haven't done that, right? We haven't done that as a Commonwealth. It's like we've kind of take, we've taken the system and we've just, you know, nickel and dime around the edges to increase ridership in certain places, but we've never taken a real holistic view of the system. I think that's happening a little bit now. There's some momentum behind saying, okay, what's the big picture? How do we fix this going forward? To your point, there was hearing, I believe recently, on a group called Transit Matters, which was pushing for a particular initiative to electrify lines to make sure that we're going from the diesel engines to a more streamlined electric system, which means that you'd have more cars, you'd have more frequent trips so that people could actually get into town easier. But then you see a proposal that comes out, like select person Salvatore was talking about, you know, from Providence to Boston, it's going to be express, and it's going to blow right through all of our towns and have an express train from Providence. So, we need to just kind of stop, take a breath, make sure that we're looking at this holistically, and really figure out where we can invest in places where it'll add to economic development. And I think Walpole is a perfect example of that. One of the issues with the Patriot Place train, which, pardon the pun, I know is the third rail in this region, for good reason. We were told that the Patriot Place commuter rail station would act as a little bit of a pressure release valve to the other surrounding communities, where people can't necessarily find parking in Walpole to take the train, where you can't find parking in Sharon, in Mansfield, in other areas, up in Norwood, which was capped out. So, that would take a little bit of a pressure off the system. But then we find out at the last minute that they were going to cancel primetime trains here in Walpole. If it's going to work as a pilot, then let it work as a pilot. If it doesn't, then we don't continue it. But I think the problem is now, we're starting to see a lot of people trying to kind of artificially inflate the ridership, which is very, very concerning to me and to the delegation. If it works, great. We'll figure out a way to mitigate some of the, some of the circumstances in Walpole. But I think the problem is now, like I said, they're starting to kind of artificially inflate that ridership program. So, it's on our radar screen. We're going to continue to monitor it and work with you. People reach out to us on a daily basis about that, so it's something that, you know, is on our priority list.
Clearly, I just want more. Clearly, they had come to us and said, oh, there's plenty of, there's plenty of capacity on that line to have all these trains. And it's tight, but it's close, you know, there's plenty of capacity. I think they're finding that there's not plenty of capacity, and that's why Walpole's trains got dumped over these Gillette trains that are, that are expresses. So, the line has to be clear. It's, the line has to be clear at Norwood, it has to be clear all the way down, and it was all in the works to the beginning, and they came before us and lied to us, I think.
So, we have a long agenda tonight. We could talk to you guys for a long time. There are many more things we could talk about, and we're really pleased that you were here tonight. I'd really like to try to do this on a fairly frequent basis, if we could, perhaps quarterly. Let's try and work something like that out. I think it's a great opportunity for us to come together so you can hear what's on our minds. It's also a great opportunity for you to all come and be seen by your constituents and so forth and get a good sense of what's happening up on Capitol Hill. So, really appreciate you being here this evening. And with that, I think we're going to move on to our next item.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And Senator Feeney, Representative McMurtry, Representative Kafka, Representative Dooley, we just want to thank you and the entire Select Board, Jim Johnson, for all the wonderful work that you do on behalf of the people that we mutually represent, the great citizens of Walpole. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, gentlemen.
President, just, I mean, you guys are hitting 40B on the train, so I'm like biting my lip, but I just wanted to say, thank you for all you're doing, but remember the village of South Walpole. It's taking the brunt of all this. The train's there, this monstrous 40B, which will completely destroy the traffic flow and the whole field of the, of the community. We now have the fields going down there, and we have the prison. We host all of that in South Walpole. So, just when you're doing all of this and anything you can do to help protect the sanctity of that village and that community and keep that spirit alive, that would mean a lot to every single member that lives down there. So, thank you.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate that sentiment.
I'll pat myself a bit. Be careful who's driving the train, though. You've got to check.
Thank you all. Thanks, John. Good to see you, John. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our next item for discussion tonight, which is the town administrator is going to give us an update regarding the October 28th social media issue that we had. This is specifically around the issue of some notes that were inadvertently posted to the town website reflecting a, some activity in an executive session. And so, we want to address that. We understand that it's problematic that those notes got posted. We want to make sure that we address it properly and expeditiously, and that's what we're going to talk about today. I do want to ask that, because I know there are a lot of people in the room who have a lot of points of view on this, and there's probably all of emotion as well. We are not going to take public comment on this. This is a discussion between the board. I'm going to ask you to respect that and allow the board to conduct its business. So, Jim, if I could ask you to step through it?
Sure. I'd like to take this opportunity to provide the board with an update regarding the October 28th social media post, which was circulated by a private resident of the community. First off, I'd like to start off by saying the Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting notes from August 6, 2019, were inadvertently posted on the town's website on September 19th. These notes were not approved by the Board of Selectmen and have since been removed from the website. There has been much speculation about the information contained in those personal notes. I would urge caution to anyone who may want to take those notes at their face value, because they do not contain accurate information of the discussion that took place. I understand that the board members, like you, want to ensure that there's transparency in our government and that information is provided in an efficient and effective manner. The law, however, provides for specific purposes which the board may engage in executive session, and the contents of this meeting were not ready to be made public at the time of their release. A mistake was made, and since this incident, we have put in safeguards to ensure that that does not happen again. Going forward, minutes of... Going forward, uh, minutes of, of materials posted on the Selectmen's website will be reviewed by myself and the Assistant Town Administrator, and then we will authorize the staff to post those minutes. The board will be provided with an actual draft of the minutes by the end of this week for your review and consideration.
Great, thanks, Jim.
I thought we were getting them tonight.
Before we-
You told me Friday we were getting them tonight.
No, I, I did not say that.
Okay. So are they gonna be on the meeting in two weeks?
Before we, before we begin-
Are they gonna be on the meeting? You also sound the phone call.
Before we-
In two weeks, we will, it'll be on the meeting. Is that your intention?
Before we, before we-
Is that your intention?
David, calm down.
Before we begin discussion, David, I do want to just remind the board that, and we all do this, we have to take, uh, ethics training. Uh, the state requires it of all Board of Selectmen members and we've all done this. And part of that is to talk about behavior in executive session and the confidentiality of discussion in executive session, which is critically important. And the reason I'm raising it is because as we discuss things amongst us tonight, I want to just remind the board, as we talk to ourselves, that we are in a public forum and that we are bound by the executive senti- executive sanction confidentiality rules. And David, you know this well. So specifically, Board of Selectmen guide from the State Ethics Commission, Confidential Information Section 23. The law prohibits you from publicly revealing confidential information or from using it or from using it for private or political purposes. Anything that is not a public record under the Massachusetts Public Records Law is considered confidential. Remember that matters discussed while the board is in executive session are confidential until after the executive session minutes are released as public records. And if, and would like for, for additional information on the public records law, the website is www.scc.state.m-a.us slash pre slash pre idx h e m. And I'll give that to anybody who'd like it. I know you didn't get that as I said it. The point of saying that is that the board is bound by the confidentiality of that executive session and we need to respect that. So as we're having conversation here tonight, I do want to just remind all of the members that we are bound by that. We will continue to be bound by that until we, as a board, meet and review those minutes and, and redo, and, and then release them if that's what we choose to do as a board. Right now, we don't have minutes. People have asked me, "Why don't you put the minutes on the agenda?" Well, we don't have minutes, is the honest answer. Jim just said that we would have a draft of those minutes by the end of the week. My commitment to you is that we will expeditiously move to review and vet those minutes properly. We will follow a good process. We don't want, part, part of the reason we're even having this conversation is because our process was broken. We don't want to compound that issue. A lot of this has to do with liability to the town and therefore the confidentiality statement that I'm making. And so it's very, very important that we respect that, that we run a good process, but that we be transparent and that we provide clear and accurate accounting for what we need to be held accountable for. So I'm not suggesting that we aren't going to release minutes, that's not the point. What I'm saying is we're gonna follow a good process and we're not gonna compound this problem. So with that, I'll open it to discussion with the board. Who'd like to go first?
I would.
David.
Um, what, so have, have, what information is now available as a public record?
None.
I asked you previously, uh, in an email, um, to have, uh, council opine on that issue as to what, what was public record and what was not. I reminded you on Friday that I still had not had an answer.
Yep.
And you're saying that council has opined on that, or, or is that your opinion?
I have not said that. I've said that what, what is public record is that we, we posted an executive session and we had that executive session. I think that's the extent of what's in the public domain.
And you're not gonna make any statement as to what has occurred to this point?
I am not, I'm not-
You're not even gonna make a statement as to what the current, uh, person, the police department, uh, chain of command is?
David, let me remind you again of the confidentiality rule here.
I, hey, Mr. Mr. Chairman, Mr. O'Neil, you may shut me down, but you're not gonna shut me up. This, this is something of utter, uh, such importance to, to this town, the activity to this board. You know, if I could sit further away, I would, I would. This, this is, this is, this is, uh, this is tremendously upsetting. And I do want to just make one statement. As you know, the meeting notes were inadvertently released and our board has received questions about it from, from our residents. I know there's a natural curiosity to try and find out what's going on. I get it. But what I don't get, and I find actually deplorable, is that people speculating about the event and making up entire incorrect narratives, even to the important point of who the victim is. That is something I find completely egregious. And the spreading, and spreading rumors that possibly a victim had been paid off. This needs to stop and it needs to stop now. I realize that the lack of transparency from this board has allowed this vacuum of information to occur and that people are concerned. Uh, I was promised by, by Mr. O'Neil when he, he requested my request to have the minutes on the tonight's meeting, on Friday, that these minutes would be on the meeting in two weeks. He said, "We don't have time to review them." Well, we had the entire weekend, we had Friday, we had Se- Monday, and we had today. This is a further, furtherance of their cover-up of the facts of this matter. This is a continuing of their cover-up of this entire matter. People should know what's going on. People should know what the command staff of their police department looks like at this point.
David, I'm gonna remind you again of the Board of Selectmen Guide for the State Ethics Commission regarding confidentiality.
Again, you, this board and I are so far apart on this issue. I, again, I, I, thank you.
Other comments from the members of the board?
I would just say that, you know, I, I take the confidentiality of our executive session very seriously. And I know there's information out there. And I'm just wondering who has been talking about our executive session discussions to other people?
Are you accusing me?
I'm not accusing you, I'm just wondering who did that.
Well, I'll tell you what-
So have you talked to other people?
Absolutely. And I will continue to talk to other people. And if you want to shut me down here, you can continue to shut me down.
David, I would recommend if you have been violating the confidentiality segment of the State Ethics Commission rule that you stop talking.
You can continue to protect your political allies and your political cronies and, and-
That's not what this is about, David.
It is absolutely what this is about. These records should have been released as soon as the document, you came, you came before this board, Mr. O'Neil-
You're incorrect.
With a, with a, with a, you, you came here and said the excep- the exception that you were gonna use was under the employment contract exception of the, the public records law. That section says that when, when the contract, the reason for having that exception is that you don't want that negotiation process to be available to the person on the other side of that, uh, that contract. Obviously, if you're talking about salary of somebody, you don't want them to look at the minutes of the meeting and then decide, uh, well, I'm gonna wait until they get to that number. I'll give you an example. So if we were hiring a finance director and it was, uh, we were offering them money and we said, "Offer the first offer $100,000. If they don't take that, add another week's vacation, but you have authority to $110,000." So obviously, you don't want that record out there. But once that contract is signed, once that contract is signed, the reason for the confidentiality no longer exists. Labor Council and this board decided to use the la- that section of the, of the code, of the exceptions, to use that exception, I'm sorry. They decided to use that exception to go into executive session. They now live by it. There was a better section of the executive session that should have been used. And I argued it that day and it got cut off from the video feed, amazingly. And then what it, what, this was in the open session of the, of the meeting. And that says, "When you're disciplining an employee, it's an entire process that must be followed." And maybe, maybe if they had called in under that section, that that privacy could be held to be. But they purposely did it that way and they're stuck with that. This is, this is a continuing process of protecting a political ally and honestly-
David, David, you're so wrong.
I know, I-
I can tell you're very agitated, but you're just spinning yourself out of control, talking about things you shouldn't be talking about. And you've admitted on TV that you violated the trust of executive session and that has implications. I'm gonna suggest we stop right here and don't continue down this path, don't make it worse than it already is, for you.
And I, I think that's probably prudent, uh, because I, I, I don't really know, knowing now that David has spoken outside of executive session-
I spoke to people after November 1st.
It's hard to know-
After November 1st.
It's hard to know-
The reason for that, the agreement had expired. After November 1st.
I think you are incorrect, sir.
It's hard to know what may or may not have been said. So I think it's-
I'm happy to have, I'll have, I'm happy to have that argument in court.
Yeah, okay. So I, I think what we need to do is stop further discussion, 'cause we really don't know what's been said. I think we need to find out and make sure that we're not gonna expose the town to further liability. What I would say is this, Jim is going to produce, uh, minutes, uh, or Jim and Cindy, by the end of the week, we will take those minutes under advisement. We will take a look at them, we will vet them, we will have town council vet them, and when they are ready for release, we will, we release them. And again, I will remind the board that the law says-
Now you're reminding me, that's okay, I, I heard it. You don't have to remind me.
I'm going to do it again. Remember that matters discussed while the board is in executive session are confidential until after the executive session minutes are released as public records. So, so that's the process we're going to follow.
And they're gonna delay releasing the minutes for another 30 days.
Could I? Yeah, Ben, sure.
Jump in as well, yeah. So to, to stay in my piece in the middle of this, um, I think, you know, I agree very much with, uh, David that the speculation that's gone on online and by, you know, certain people is, is deplorable and beyond the pale. And, uh, I really don't have the words to describe it and, and I've spoken with David about that and, and we're in very close agreement. Uh, similarly, in, in having spoken with David and, and other members of this board, along with people, uh, who are in the, in the audience tonight, um, I find the speculation of cover-ups and, and other things of that nature to be equally deplorable. It's, it's speculation and spreading of rumors, just like anything else. Speaking only for myself, I can say that I've talked with people, um, about this to the extent that I can under the law with the executive session. Residents have reached out to me and said, "What's going on?" Um, you know, "We have questions, this, this seems unreasonable." And all of that is very fair, obviously, given the, given the situation. But I think that if we can all, um, take the temperature down for a minute and understand that the executive session meeting minutes are gonna be released in due course and, and the proper framework of things, there's a, a way to do this, there's a procedure and we're gonna follow it. And they're going to be, uh, released to the public, just as they should be. And I understand that people don't think it's fast enough. It's not fast enough for me either. I, I empathize completely with that. But I do agree with Jim in that, uh, mistakes have been made already on this. And so moving more quickly or rushing things is only gonna compound the issue. So I would only ask for, for patience and lowering of the temperature, um, from a lot of folks so that we can, we can get this right and get the information out there. And I would just say again, that I'm, I'm available via email or phone or, or, dare I say, Facebook, um, to, uh, give what information I can to people. And like I say, there's, there's a lot of people in the room here that have reached out and asked questions and, and I'll, you know, uh, certainly speak to what I can and then after the minutes are released, to the extent that we can speak further, we're open to that. So I think, um, people, people jumping out there with the speculation is, is, is awful. And I'll just say again that, that I'm available. And I know that, uh, I'm only speaking for myself, but I know a lot of the other members of the board as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, and that's well said. So, thank you, Ben. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, then let's move on to our next order of business. Uh, we've got Jack Wiley in here to, uh, talk to us about using $10,000 from the Wetlands Protection Act fees for staff hours as we did in years past. So, Jack.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, purpose of, this is to, uh, request the board to approve the expenditure of $10,000 to, it comes from the state section of the Wetlands filing phase. Uh, and this is used to, uh, supplement our agents' pay and our secretary for additional activities in order to, um, to administer the Wetlands Protection Act and, uh, that goes beyond whatever is budgeted. And particular, uh, secretary, the hours for the meetings, for the Conservation Commission meetings comes out of this fund. Uh, the agent has, I believe it's two hours a week that is budgeted, uh, of the budget amount that comes out of this fund. And any additional, uh, time that is put in by the agent that can be applied to administering the Wetlands Protection Act. Presently, um, the fee account as of October 31 has $77,586.37 in that account. We last requested the, a $10,000, uh, amount by, um, back in May of 18, May 23rd of 18. And the present request of $10,000 was approved by the Conservation Commission at the October 9th meeting. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so I recall when you were in last time, one of the things we talked about was, because this is personnel cost, one of the questions that we asked was, "Shouldn't we be building this into the base budget?" I suspect you'll get that same question again, Jack, so what's the, what's the answer to that?
Uh, the, the money has to be expended for administering the act. And there are many other things that, uh, particularly our agent does and also our secretary, 'cause she's also a secretary for the zoning board. So, um, it's kind of sitting in, in that issue. The other is, um, I think we are now using, and in the past, I don't think we budgeted any hours from that, uh, fee account. I believe this year, is that correct, Jim?
We got a little creative this year. We actually did budget for that. We bumped the conservation agents' hours up.
Okay.
I think to 33. This was gonna bring it to 35 for the year to make her a full-time employee. We've been eating away at this last couple of years. I think a few years ago it was 27 or 29 hours. So we've been solely trying to get there, because Landis has taken on more duties, just, not just the conservation stuff. She handles a lot of our stormwater management, a lot of it, and dealing with that permit. So we've been trying to get up there.
Good, okay. Any other questions for Jack?
I'm comfortable. I'll make a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of $10,000 from the Wetlands Protection Act fees for staff hours to administer and enforce the Mass Wetlands Protection Act.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thanks, Jack. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up, we have, um, I, I think Carl, Carl Kalbaldov here. Yeah, Carl, you're gonna talk to us about a request to, uh, for a street opening moratorium on North Street to install a water main for a new house.
Yes, very quickly, Mr. Chair, I delivered a short memorandum just saying that, uh, there's a request to do a water service on a, on a street, North Street, uh, that's under moratorium. It's, I think, in the fourth year of the five-year moratorium. Basically, it says we, we can, we'll do what we need to do to get a quality repair on that road so it'll hold up.
And I think you also have in here that, uh, it, that the warranty would, uh, cover the remaining period of the, uh, the, the five years where we would, the moratorium, I guess is what I was trying to say.
Correct, Mr. Chair. They're almost, they, they would be a year anyway and it's almost a year before, it's just about the same, a year before the moratorium's up.
Okay, great, Carl. Any questions?
And this is for a new home.
Okay, thanks, Carl. Any questions for Carl? Okay, so entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for Mr. DiCipio for a street opening moratorium on North Street subject to the conditions set forth in the memo from the town engineer, Kalbaldov, eleven dash three.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thanks very much, Carl.
Thank you.
I think we also now have Pennington Crossing up next, are you covering that?
I am, or at least I'm going to introduce it, Mr. Chair. We delivered a memorandum and several attachments, which are reduced sizes of the plans, or excerpts of the plans we want you to approve. This is for the reconfiguration of the curbing on the intersection of East and High Plain and East and School Street. It's previously approved concepts by the board, and basically, we have construction plans that are up now. I have the proponent, which is Mr. Mark Mastriani from Pulte Homes, and the traffic engineer, MDM, and they can give you a very quick look at what's going to happen up there, if you desire, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, appreciate it, Carl. Yeah, want to put it where the camera can pick it up, and we'd be able to see right up on the...
The camera is...
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, for the record, my name is Robert Micho.
Could you come up to the mic so, so that the TV...
Is that, is it possible for me to slide this over here, is that okay?
It's good, it's good, indicating that.
We have a vast TV audience that we need to make sure they can hear what you're saying, so...
Great, thank you. Again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, Robert Micho, I'm a principal of MDM Transportation Consultants based in Marlborough. The Pennington Crossing project was approved in 2018, subject to certain conditions, among which were certain off-site improvements at School Street, at the site driveway itself, and at East High Plains Street. Right, so the three locations. The plans that are being presented to you here were presented on the basis of what those improvements were conceptually going to look like, and have since been engineered to a level that would allow their construction. So beginning at the School Street intersection, the concept was to take the pedestrian crossing, which is a very long crossing here, to shorten it up by reducing the curb corner radii here, to improve the corner radii at the remaining corners to ADA compliance standards, further modification to include a pedestrian-activated beacon crossing and associated sidewalk improvements. As we moved toward the High Plains Street intersection, the concept was to take a very awkward alignment of intersection and to tee it up at a ninety-degree alignment to enhance visibility from the stop position coming from High Plains Street, to relocate the pedestrian crossing at a point which was more visible and less apt to be in conflict with high-speed traffic, and to reduce the corner radii here, to reduce the speeds at which people were coming from East Street to High Plains Street. The outcome of further engineering, meeting with Public Works, engineering, various departments, is presented in what we call the final design plan set. This is the School Street intersection. That maintains exactly the same type of geometry that was approved locally, conceptually. You see the reduction in the curb radius here, shortens the crosswalk, introduces a single crosswalk at East Street with appropriate traffic controls, push-button traffic controls. We've actually further enhanced the design to increase the radius of the turn from School Street to East Street to further facilitate emergency vehicle movements in that particular direction. And you'll see all of the new sidewalk elements are now also incorporated as part of that plan. As we move to High Plains Street, again, we've achieved the ninety-degree alignment, we've retained a center island feature, we've introduced the pedestrian crosswalk with the appropriate push-button control beacons, we've improved the open space area, if you will, and reduced the curb radius for the right turn from East to High Plains Street, and likewise, in the opposite direction, from High Plain to East Street. We've actually expanded the sidewalk improvements to come further down High Plains Street than were originally anticipated. They more appropriately tie in with existing driveways along that alignment, and we're also improving portions of the sidewalk on the north side of East Street. So these plans are the outcome of a series of meetings with departmental heads, engineering, public works, fire, police. And we're confident that they represent a substantial improvement and are entirely consistent with what was approved and endorsed through local approvals in 2018. So we, on that basis, would seek endorsement of those plans as being consistent with those approvals, so that Pulte can get to the next step and actually retain a contractor and construct these.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just weigh in on this one. This particular intersection, Pulte's done a great job working with the fire department. You may recall that we were here months ago talking with these folks, and one of the biggest kind of hookups on this was the new fire engine and the tower truck. They've worked tirelessly with Paul Berry and the Chief Bailey to make sure that the turning radius gets us to where we need to be with that tower truck and engineering, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I would just make a comment, I think that these changes, which we talked about many months ago, I think will really improve both of those intersections, and especially make them much safer for people who are walking through them. Both of those intersections have a lot of trouble when people are trying to cross through, whether it's at School Street or down at High Plain. So I think this is a big improvement, and, you know, we appreciate you guys taking it really serious and, you know, making those intersections as good as they can be. I appreciate that.
And is the chief here? He may be behind the...
Chief, I might go back.
Yeah, I seem to recall at one point that they are, chief. I seem to recall at one point, this intersection was the most dangerous intersection in town. Is that still the case, or has the improvements that were made there improved that?
I would, I don't have the stats right in front of me, but that, yeah, High Plain, High Plain and East is a high-crash intersection as well as tooling, so...
Yeah.
We're really looking forward to maybe...
We think that'll, because it improves the sightlines and the flow, it looks like your turns are more controlled, that should reduce the number of accidents.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, as you all, if you've ever traveled through East and High Plain, you kind of cringe coming, especially if you head towards East.
Right, right.
Oncoming traffic.
Then my only other question is, there is a house there, if I look on the picture, there is a house on the other side of the street.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that is very close to the road. In the new road layout, does that, does that improve the closeness to the road, meaning make it bigger, or does it actually reduce it or not affect it?
It really doesn't affect it.
It doesn't, okay.
There's a minor change to the curb line on this portion of the road, but we're talking about a foot or two difference. Really, the largest difference was where this radius meets the street.
And that's pushed out.
It's pushed out, correct. So there's actually an enhancement on this corner.
Yeah.
For that reason.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for off-site improvements to East Street and School Street and East and High Plain Street as a part of the Pennington Crossing AQV, subject to the requirements set forth by the town engineer.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, up. Jim?
Jim?
Can I finish the vote? Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
I just have one request, we have Carl on here, just so we can kind of let him go. I know we have a bunch of other business. Right at the last thing here, Corcoran LLC.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, nice presentation.
If you don't mind, should be pretty quick.
Sure, go ahead, let's do that.
So this, if you skip to the back of your packet here, you may recall that we discussed this at the last meeting. Corcoran, I know Abigail's here from representing corporate management. They had requested we move the sidewalk so they could do some work and cross the people over. They've come up with a really good solution that the police department and fire department, engineering departments happy with, where we actually don't have to move the pedestrians to the other side of the street. We're going to make it work right there. So I think, Ben, you had asked for some engineered plans, which you have in there, the stamped drawings. Carl, anything?
No, Mr. Chair, there is a stamped plan by Allen and Major, it has all advanced warning. It is moving the barriers over to keep the pedestrian travel on the same side of West Street as the development, Ninety-five West Street. And it provides room for the two-way traffic. When everything's all said and done, and the new sidewalk is installed, the barriers will be removed, line striping will go back down essentially the way it is today. So, and it'll be striped in between, so there should be no confusion. So that's, if there are any questions, as Jim mentioned, we also have the project director from Corcoran here as well.
Thanks, Carl, appreciate that. Okay, any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan presented by Corcoran and Company for reconstruction of existing sidewalk and new curbing on the West Street for the Commons and the Walpole Station project, subject to the conditions of the town engineer and eleven dash seventeen.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay, it's now after eight o'clock, which is our posted time for open forum, so we're going to get to that right now. Who would like to speak at open forum, can I see a show of hands? One, two? Okay, you had your hand up first, so you can go first. Just tell us who you are and, for the minutes, and go ahead.
I'm Shannon McCarthy, I live on Stone Street. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the MBTA trains and how atrocious the service has been recently. I commute daily in and out, and the on-time performance has been late, ever since the Foxborough Line launched. I'm sure you guys are well aware, I wish the state reps could be here to hear this, but anything that we can do to...
Were you here earlier when they were here?
I was, and I was listening to what, I was listening to the conversation, so I'm glad it's been brought up, I'm glad that they're aware of our concerns. But, you know, anything that they can do to at least get things to run on time is fine, because what's happening is the trains are running late, and then I'm late picking up my kids from daycare, and then I'm paying fees because of, because I'm late, and it's just, it's a big problem, and it's disrupting a lot of people's lives.
Yeah, I was going to offer a perspective on that, but we were running so late, I wanted to move us along, but just in reinforcement of what you're saying, I take the Franklin Line, I pick it up in Norwood and take the six thirty-three, and over the last couple of weeks, the service really has been atrocious. There was one day where the trains literally didn't show up. And there are other days where the trains are really overcrowded, so I feel your pain. I actually made calls to the governor's office on this, and I did hear back from them. Now, what that means, your guess is as good as mine, but they did actually call me back, and I pointed out that some of the issues the governor has had with public transportation in the past, probably doesn't want this to become another one. I don't know if we'll get to his ear or not, but I did do that. We will continue to work this with the reps and our senator as well. So thank you, David, yeah?
Is there a way we can memorialize her comments and send them to the delegation, say?
Sure, and I'll reach out to the reps that have been designated to me to deal with. So, yeah, I took Shannon McCarthy, Stone Street, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and so I appreciate all of your support, I know you guys are looking out for us, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully it'll get better from here.
From one rudder to another, we're going to try and get it fixed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. O'Leary, I think you had your hand up? Yeah?
John O'Leary, RTM precinct three. This is in regards to the Pennington, well, crossing, crosswalk we just discussed. I live in the area close to the East Street, High Plain Street intersection, and as I mentioned when this plan came before the boards, while it might be a good idea to adjust the intersection, the plan is a disaster in the making. The backup on that street as it is right now can sometimes get back to Washington Street. You're going to double the backup with this configuration, because the people, the main path is High Plain Street to Town. That is the main choice of everyone in either direction. This way, you're changing the main path from Town to East Walpole, which is probably one of the lesser choices. You're going to have a large backup forming at High Plain Street, and in times of rush hour, it's probably going to bypass the Washington Street lights, and then will back up even further up High Plain Street. So I suggest, if possible, that that plan be revised or be looked at, to try to come up with a second alternative that may be better for traffic flow. I admit, like, as Chief Carl Michael said, it is a bad intersection. There have been many accidents in the past. But I think we need to find a compromise that will improve the intersection without destroying traffic flow.
So I don't want you to go away tonight thinking that we might actually follow that up, because we just took a vote and accepted the plan as is. And I think you heard the conversation, and the board was unanimous in its vote to support the new plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you coming.
Hey, Jim, the chief had his hand up.
Oh, chief, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
So I just want to say that was a very good question, and I brought up the same question when we looked at the plans as well, and I brought up the same exact concerns. Apparently, you know, when the engineer looked at it, currently, if you're coming from High Plain Street traveling towards Walpole Center and you get up to the stop sign, the way that they explained it was that, you know, you really can get like one or two cars in, you know, at the stop sign, and then you have the right turn that kind of goes towards like East Walpole. So currently, that's, when the traffic backs up now, you're only getting those three cars that are able to queue, and nobody can actually get to the right turn lane. So they actually think that it's got to get better when you put both lanes off to the right. You can get one, two or three cars in the queue to take the right turn towards East Walpole, and then hopefully, in theory, be able to make the left turn more frequently, and hopefully, you know, therefore, reducing the backup, but that remains to be seen.
David?
So we discussed this issue when it was on the meeting, when it was in its conceptual level. And I hope I'm not violating open meetings laws since it was on the meeting tonight. But one of the things that's going to happen, because now East Street and High Plain are going to be more of a ninety-degree angle, if you're heading towards Town on High Plain Street, you're now not going to see these cars flying down the road making the right turn. You are, so many times when they're going to make the right turn, I don't know if you know this, but instinctively, even though they have their blinker on, you're looking for them to slow down a little bit. And in the past, they didn't have to slow down because of the shape of the turn. What's going to happen now is they're not only going to have their blinker on, but you're going to see them decelerate in preparation for making the right-hand turn. So that's going to allow more people at the stop sign to make it through when someone's coming down and ready to make a left turn. It's actually rare, more rare that people go all the way through, so that's going to, that's going to allow more people to get through that intersection. The engineer confirmed that at our last meeting, and that's why they decided to do that way. So we're hoping, and we can change things after or do some things maybe, but we're hoping that that, you know, obviously, years of traffic engineering, people understand what people, you know, they do studies and psychological studies on people to figure out what they're going to do. Hopefully, that will work out in all of our favor.
Thank you, David, okay. Was there anybody else? Okay, then that's it for open forum tonight, thank you very much for your comments tonight. Onto new business, first up is a vote to execute all MSBA contracts and other related documents. Jim, do you want to say a couple of words about this?
Yeah, just a comment on this, the, obviously, we had a meeting last week with the MSBA. Jim, you were there, I think some, everyone else left. We were accepted into the program for the next stage. The town building committee is actually set to meet next Tuesday. We're going to start the process of soliciting proposals for a project manager, and then after that, they're going to work with us to find a design team on this one, so it's really getting the ball rolling and authorizing. The MSBA requires some certain votes in there, which we specifically took the motions from them, so this is ready to go, I'll take any questions you might have.
Just a comment, first of all, it was really gratifying to be at that board meeting the other day and have our project be formally accepted into the feasibility study phase. It's a major step forward for the program and is going to allow now our committee, which, as you know, we put in place some weeks ago, even months ago, to actually begin their work driving the feasibility study. So that's going to be really good. I note in Exhibit A, the budget that we've got set up, and that this ties in exactly with what they've told us in the feasibility study document. So I think we are ready to go forward and sign this. Any other comments?
I was happy with it, I mean, I went through it in detail the other day. One of the things I think, and the committee certainly knows this, Exhibit C is reimbursement... is, our reimbursement rate is forty-eight point six eight percent, and then there's a couple other possible incentive points that we can earn, so, uh, they happen to be around maintenance was a good one, and then green, uh, energy efficiency, so we should be striving to pick up a few more points if we can, 'cause both of those things will help us with long-term costs, so.
Great. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to designate the town administrator to execute all MSBA contracts and in any other documents related to the project as requested by the MSBA, or otherwise on behalf of the Board of, the Select Board, and further to direct the town administrator to include in the packet for the MSBA next board meeting occurring after such action is taken, a summary therefore of, um, or copies of signed documents.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Jim, and, uh, really, again, a big milestone for the, for the, uh, the program. All right, next up, uh, review and comment on response to Mass Housing Letter for Cedar Edge Project and vote to send letter, and we've got a similar one right behind it for Diamond Hill Estates. Jim, do you wanna just briefly touch on what these are?
First of all, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize, uh, Ashley Clark. She helped me write both of these letters. Uh, she is our new Community and Economic Development, uh, Director, and she did a great job. Um, I really appreciate her work on this one. Um, so, just if I'd like to kinda group them both in together. Cedar's Edge is obviously the big one. Uh, what you have before you is about twenty-eight pages, and then before this meeting, I have about eighteen other residence, residence letters that I've included as part of the packet. That'll be sent in, um, with the, the Cedar Edge Project. Um, so, we've gotten some good feedback from residents. I think, uh, some of the residents have come in and looked at the draft letter that's being presented to you. They seem, uh, hap, pleased with it, that we've touched upon a lot of their concerns. Obviously, there's a lot of concerns with wetlands crossing, uh, traffic issues, especially with that bottleneck there right on the, um, near the railroad tracks, uh, pedestrian safety issues, um, water issues as far as, uh, how much do we have the water capacity to handle both of these projects, uh, public safety issues. So, we really tried to cover everything. I will say in the Cedar's Edge Project, uh, letter, everyone, uh, all the departments weighed in, and some commissions and boards, uh, it was good to have so much feedback in there.
And, and I agree. Uh, both extremely well-written, so thank you very much for the help with that, but a lot of detail. So, the, the input from the departments is really meaty and solid. I don't know how much it will weigh in with the, uh, mass housing, however, it's clear that we've done the due diligence on this and, and provided some fairly, really weighty and meaty commentary back.
Sure.
So, great job.
And I think the hard work and input from the residents, too.
Mm-hmm.
They really, they did a lot of homework and put it, really came together and gave some good info, too.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, any further discussion? Ben, yeah?
Uh, yeah, I would agree with, with what everyone said thus far on, on the letter itself, and, and I'm glad to see that it's, you know, as robust as it is, and I know that I had made some comments, Jim, to you about, um, the language in the letter and, how we avail ourselves of what little sway we have, and, and making sure that we are, uh, you know, cordial and professional while also getting on the, on the front foot. Um, and I think that's important, because I think we have really excellent points, particularly in this Cedar Edge letter. Um, it's, it's very compelling, so I just wanna make sure that we're as, maybe aggressive is too aggressive a word, but that, that we're as forward as possible in these letters.
Great point. Any other, uh, discussion? Okay, there being none, I'll entertain motions.
I'll make a motion to send the letter as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. And the second motion?
Moving on, so that was in reference to eleven dash sixteen, Cedar's Edge.
Cedar's Edge.
Now, moving on, I will make a motion to send the letter as written for eleven dash seven, um, Diamond Hill.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
I will make a motion, um, to approve the request for Fisher School Parent Advisory Council to hold a five K and a one-mile fun run, April third, twenty twenty, starting at nine ten a.m.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to use Adams Farm for a five-mile hike on December twelfth, twenty nineteen.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve John Cogan, Veteran Service Officer, to use both Commons on November eleventh, twenty nineteen, for Veterans Day Observance from ten thirty to two p.m.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for jalapenos for a one-day entertainment license to have acoustic music, music on November twenty-seventh from seven to eleven p.m.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Fancy That for Bell Ring Performance on December first, twenty nineteen, from ten a.m. to four thirty p.m.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of the Knights of Columbus for a one-day all-alcohol license for eleven sixteen nineteen from twelve to four p.m.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
And I will very excitedly make a motion to award the bid contract number twenty twenty dash zero five, Route One A Recreation Facility, in the amount of five million nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, hundred thousand, to Rad Sports, and to award two project alternatives for the lights, for the synthetic turf fields, in the amounts of five hundred thousand, and the lights and natural grass fields in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand, and further to designate the town administrator to execute all contracts and all other documents related to this, to the project.
I second that. Any discussion? Go ahead.
My discussion is that I think this is a very, very, very exciting project, that really, we've done such a good job of the last few years, coming together and getting our municipal buildings done, getting our public safety done, taking care of our seniors and having a place for them, and now to round it off with a beautiful outdoor recreation space, that I think Walpole has always been perfect, but we are now ready to move into the next decades, and I'm very excited to have been a part of it.
As well said. Other comments?
I do have a comment.
Ben?
Um, yeah, so this, it is very exciting, and, and we're very happy to be able to, um, make this vote, and, uh, you know, I really believe that, uh, all the, the work that went up to this, you know, there's a lot of people that put time and efforts into this, and I'd really like to thank them, um, for their efforts in, in outreach, in investigating different alternatives, um, assessing the cost, and I'd also like to thank everybody that reached out with, with questions and comments, and I think that this is a, an example of what we can do in Walpole when we have, uh, projects and needs, uh, of various types, where we can, we can work together, we can discard, um, discard items that we don't think are appropriate or are not needed, and, and move forward with the items that are. So, to me, this, this is the, the process working, and so it's encouraging, um, that, that we're able to do this.
Well said.
Just one comment. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Barrett for his presentation at town meeting, and his excellent job of, uh, presenting that point of view.
Thanks, David, appreciate it. And what I would just add to it is this, um, I know a lot of people did a lot of work, uh, to get this to come together, and I know there's still a lot more work to be done around fundraising and, and all of that, and we'll, and we'll get to that. Um, but I have to say that I wanna thank Nancy and Ben, because when we originally talked about this, I was in a very different place than the two of you were. I was in the camp of smaller and even less, and I must say, the two of you stood your ground, and, um, ultimately convinced me to go along with you, and I will say that you got us to a better place, and I just wanna thank you, because what we ended up with is far better than what I had originally been thinking. So, you guys did a great job, so thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
I'll make a motion to award bid contract number twenty twenty dash oh nine for Memorial Pond Hydro, um, raking and planting project for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Solitude Lake Management.
I'll second that. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, um, I know Landis has been waiting for this one all night.
[laughing]
This is for the...
Just stole your thunder.
Um, this is for, um, the other side over near, uh, Blessed Sacrament to clean up a lot of the area over there. I know a lot of people have inquired about the status of that project. Um, you know, have we used all the funds? Where are the funds? This is actually, these, this one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is actually coming through a grant through the Superfund Site that was granted throughout, to the, to the town, through the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife. So, that's gonna clean up about, uh, uh, one point two five acres of land, and then, uh, nine, nine tenths of acres of water over there. Think of getting that right. Um, a lot of that area over there. And then over on this side, we're working with the Norfolk County Mosquito Control Project to clean up a lot of those, um, I don't know what kinda plant's there, but those long things that almost look like...
Cattails.
Cattails, yes. So, we've been patient with them, because they've been dealing with the triple E outbreak this fall and everything, but it's on their list. They have their inv, uh, info, uh, already posted out on site there. We had DPW guys out there last week, you know, weeding as much as possible, so we're trying to keep that site. We pulled the dock, um, so we wanna keep moving this thing forward. I don't want people to think it's, it's at a standstill, no, no more work's gonna occur. We're, we're still plugging away at this thing.
Thank you. Landis, you have been sitting there patiently. Is there anything you would like to add to that?
Um, no, I just was gonna get you out of your questions.
Right. Well, thank you for all your efforts on this. Great job.
And, um, I just, I wanted to add that, um, it looks so beautiful. I know there's trim work and things that have to be done, but, you know, the whole town has to be taken care of, but over the summer, when we walked out, and I got to walk out on all that docking and their digging and stuff, it was very cool, and I appreciated the tour, but one pond down, we've got a few more to move on to.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, so, uh, did we, I've forgotten, did we do a motion yet?
I made a motion.
And do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
And I will make a motion to approve the request to hold the annual Christmas Parade at eleven a.m., and the tree lighting on November thirtieth, twenty nineteen, from six to eight on the Common.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Okay, old business, nothing, consent agenda, nothing. Town administrators, update?
Yes, and I promise I'll be quick. Uh, budget process, we're starting the twenty twenty-one budget process, I have to get used to saying that, uh, very soon. If you'd like to work with me on anything, or there's some priorities that the board wants to make out, there's important priorities, just let me know, and, uh, and I'll start to focus in on that. It's very early in the process. Uh, we talked about the MSBA. Old Town Hall, regretfully, I have to inform the board, the bid, did, uh, the bid deadline has come and gone. Uh, we received zero bids, uh, on that one. So, it's kinda back to the drawing board. I was hopeful to hear that the legislators is still really on their, uh, radar. I have spoken to, um, someone from the community, uh, DHCD, which was, uh, Mike Canary, that was previously headed by Jay Ash. This is on their radar, too. I explained the situation to him, and they actually said they would feel good if no one bid on it, because then they could put it through the Mass Works Grant Program and potentially bring in some grant funds on that one, that one million dollars, and start to improve the building there. So, we have about seventeen thousand dollars left over in the feasibility study. I'm gonna ask Dawn to find some local architects to see if they could start to lay out some plans and, and do some more, uh, additional, uh, work for us on the building. I, my goal here is to, uh, come, uh, twenty-four, I want that building to be in tip-top shape for the three-hundredth anniversary, and really to be a centerpiece, whether it's a business in there, or some type of municipal use, but I want it looking great, and that's kind of a goal for me, but much more to come on that, and I'll take any guidance your board can have and support you guys can offer.
Well, I guess, you know, on that topic, the question that I, that I start with is, uh, if I, if memory serves, we, uh, we need to spend a million dollars just to make the building weather-tight, if I'm not mistaken. Is it, do I have that right?
Something like that. It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we put a new boiler in there. That came through one of the grants that, uh, the legislators were able to get to us through, last year, through the Office of Travel and Tour, Tourism. Dawn was able to put a new whole, whole heating system in there, so that's one step, but we looked at basically doing the staircases there, and that work alone, just to freshen up that wood and make it nice, was seventy-five thousand dollars, so, it's a lot of money that needs to be invested into that building.
I think, I think what we really need to focus on, though, is we can't have the building deteriorate. So, I think we really need to come back with a recommendation that says, look, in order to prevent this from deteriorating any further, that we need to do A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and give some, get some estimates on that, um, 'cause otherwise, we're just gonna continue to, to, to have the thing fall apart. Um, to that million dollars that we talked about with the reps and senator, could that money be used to weather-tight the building if we were able to get it, or is that specifically for some other purpose for using the building?
I think it could be used, but the way it was explained to me is, you really have to have, that the grants come out in the s, uh, spring or next summer.
Yeah.
You re, will work with you, especially if it follows through. So, I think come next spring, we're gonna work closely with the delegation and Mike Canary, uh, with DHCD, and see if there's something that, that we could be done, be done there. But in the meantime, I'm gonna have Dawn use the remaining funds there to kinda see what specific items need to be done to make that building weather-tight.
Right.
Can we do any of that stuff in-house? He, you know, Dawn's pretty creative. He did this great Roman here, so.
Yeah. We, um, we talked about, uh, re, rean, not reinvigorating, I'd be wrong to say that, but creating a, a follow-on committee to the one that did all the fine work before. Wh- where are we on that?
I believe Cindy had sent me that over, I think it was, it, maybe yesterday, asking if it was okay to post it, because we're doing that new process now.
Yeah.
I just haven't had a chance. I have to see if that committee's on there, but...
Because it would be, it would be good to get that committee involved with this. It feels like we have a couple of avenues we could be pursuing here, uh, so I think we oughta be working to get that committee up and running and, and try to start moving things forward here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Agreed. Thank you.
Um, related, uh, when you men, you mentioned the, 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 the three, uh, fiftieth coming up, uh, or, or three-hundredth coming up. The, um, uh, we, in our last meeting, I think, said that we wanted to bring forth some ideas on, on what we, the board, might be looking for as ways to celebrate that milestone, and, um, so can we make sure that we put that on the agenda for next time around, so that we can, you know, formally talk about that, and, uh, I, I'd still like to, to get that, you know, get some, get something out there to see if we can form at least an exploratory committee, but I think the, uh, the board felt that we should put some of our own ideas forth first, so let's put that on the agenda for next time around.
Sure.
Okay? Okay.
The last couple of items. Uh, master plan, you may recall, maybe, within the last year, we talked about master plan and zoning rewrite. Um, now that Ashley's on board, we've really started to work on that. Uh, we've, we drafted a RFP to, to find a firm to come out and help us write, rewrite our master plan. That's just about ready to go, but after a little bit further research, back in two thousand and four, the awarding authority on this was the Planning Board, and that's governed by Mass General Law, so I'd like to bring them in the fold early on, so we just don't, have you guys vet it, then hand it over to them. I'd like to have both boards vet it, see if there's any additions or substitutions you like, might wanna make, and then we start to advertise and get the ball rolling on it, so we can get going on it, so.
Makes sense. Sounds like a good idea.
And last item, uh, Horn in South Walpole. Uh, I thought that might come up, um, but I, I've had multiple inquiries about the train and the, the loud whistle, the horn on the, the trains. I've explained to some of the people, the board has had a discussion about the, the horns in the past. Um, at the time before the train started, the both police chief and fire chief came in before your board, explained that they were a bit concerned with making a quieted zone in there. Uh, basically, your board has to petition the MBTA to make it a quiet zone. I've explained to residents, if they are really that upset about it, and they wanna do something about this, they have to probably get a petition together, um, with a lot of signatures, because I think it, it'll take a lot of people to sign on that they're waiving some of their safety here for you folks to even consider it. I've suggested to one woman who reached out today, work with the Board of Assessors, we'll get a mailing, we'll do a circle around the Summer Street Crossing of about three thousand feet, and notify as many of butters in that area. We'll give you the list, and then you can kinda see how many people will actually sign on. Are you comfortable with me kinda sending that message out, and if they wanna really come forward, that's what they can do?
You know, I sympathize with the, the fact that the, the horn is going off. Um, I worry about the safety implications of that. You know, that horn is there for a purpose, and we have made a lot of noise ourselves around the, the safety of that crossing. Um, I mean, I guess I suppose it...
At least, they can have the opportunity.
I suppose, uh, yeah.
Have any of you driven through there at night? Like, the South Walpole one?
Yeah.
If you're coming from South Walpole Common and you're heading up Summer Street, when you get to, right to the, uh, post office, they put this huge metal utility box there that has this l, white light on it, that's like pointing down... that has this l- white light on it that's like pointing down, that it almost looks like a train. And then you also can't see through it and can't see by it. It like wrecks your line of sight of what you did have to the right. So, I feel like it's even more dangerous. You know, I don't have an answer about the horn. The horn's loud, but, I mean, I, I think that if we want to get rid of the horn, I think we need to slow the speed down. And I know that, um, the chief really wants to do that, too. So, I don't know if somehow we can figure a way to put that all together. And also, what are we doing about that? Like, it just looks weird. I, I urge you guys to drive through like it.
Yeah, the light, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll take a drive. No, I haven't seen that.
Yeah.
It's more of a distraction than you're going through that zone.
Right, as opposed to being able to see down the track.
Maybe I could ask the, the two chiefs to, well, I'll reach out along with the chiefs and just say that, could you look at it and see if there's even a, because I would think it's just a driving, you know, it's going to just distract you and you could drive into something. So maybe we could go that route, that it's a public safety concern.
I would just say I'm not very open right now to reducing the train whistle. You know, if we have six months or a year's experience, maybe we can talk about it then. But right now, I'm still worried about the whole safety, uh, problem. And even with the one going through at Walpole Station, uh, visibility there is horrible if you're coming up the driveway. And, and I know they're going slower there than they are in South Walpole, but still, I mean, it's people being distracted and a car almost through, but I, I think it's still just a mess.
Right.
Yeah, I, I agree, and, and especially given how much, you know, we have been banging the table on safety to do something that would unwind it, doesn't, doesn't seem to make sense. So I, I think, Jim, probably the, uh, you know, obviously, we sympathize with anybody who's being, you know, affected by that horn, but I, I just don't see how we can do anything about it.
Yeah, because wasn't there actually a, a form that said that they needed to be going under a certain speed anyway? And we're not doing that?
From what I recall is, the local body, which is your board, has to petition the state to, uh, uh, go forward with a quiet zone.
And, and I, I, to you, all of your points, I, I think, at least for now, let's have people reminded that there's train, a train coming. And, let's look at this a year from now and, and, and decide, um, something.
I agree.
It's, especially the kids still figuring out the ne- their neighborhood. So, and there's still a few fencing issues that we need to deal with and clarify, and, and maybe we'll feel more comfortable after that's done.
Well, and it's getting colder now, but next spring, as the kids get out on their bikes and they're running through the woods across the tracks, I worry about that as well.
I'm still concerned about going up Summer Street from Washington Street. That area on the right, there's a business there, I think a landscaping business with a great lawn. There's no fencing there between there and the, and the track. And, and maybe we can ask them to put up a fence, uh, um, bushes or something to stop that. Because the attractive nuisance or the idea that the kid can, might say, oh, I can get around this now. And I don't want them to even think of that as a possibility.
Well, just like Pulte is improving the intersections at High Plain and School, we need to do something with that South Walpole intersection. I don't know what. I mean, it's historic and nobody's going to want to change it, but it's a mess when there's a lot of traffic, so.
Okay. Jim, anything else? Okay. I think that concludes our formal agenda. Uh, we are going to move into executive session at this point. And, uh, so, uh, Chairman's Declaration, I hereby declare that under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One, subsection three, the purpose of the executive session will be to conduct a strategy, to conduct a strategy session with respect to the possible litigation of, litigation relative to the Foxborough MBTA pilot program with Town Council. And that a discussion of foregoing an open session could compromise the purpose of the executive session. And we, I, I see we have a choice here. I think we generally do return to open session to then adjourn, and we will do that.
Because we don't have any votes.
I'll second that.
Correct, yeah. Okay, uh, well, that, actually, we, we need the motion now. So.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen go into executive session under General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One, Three, for the purpose and reasons declared by the Board's Chairman, with the Board to return to open session just for the conclusion of executive session.
I'll second that.
We'll call vote. David?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Jim, aye. Ben?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in executive session. Uh, we'll, uh, can you take us off, uh, offline?